Good evening. Today is Monday, July 2021. This is the regular July meeting of USD 453 Leavenworth. And call to order, roll call, Mr. Kearney.
Here.
Mr. Goodman.
Here.
Mrs. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Powell.
Here.
Mrs. Price.
Here.
Mrs. Wells.
Here.
And I'm Douglas Darlin, I'm here. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please say a thank you very much. Dr. Roth, can we please have the district mission statement?
Yes, it's to prepare every student for success in every classroom, every day.
And I don't see scheduled patron input. And so we need a motion to adopt Knight's agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Wells and a second by Mrs. Murphy. All those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number two, city manager quarterly report.
Mr. Chairman, Board, always a pleasure to be here to talk about what's going on in the city. Paul Kramer, city manager. First, I want to thank the board, the district administration, and of course, teachers and staff, David Brewer, for another successful year for my family. We appreciated the way that you took care of our children and kept them safe and educated. And it was a wonderful year, so thank you for that, just for me personally. From the city's behalf, I have a couple of updates, a lot of stuff going on in the city. We are in the midst of budget. I presented the city commission's proposed budget last Tuesday night, and then we go into budget meetings this Friday. They are all day at City Hall, they're open to the public, they start at 9:00 a.m. And we will go through every apartment. And then the five-year capital plan is part of that presentation. If you have any questions on the budget, please, I'm here to answer them at the end if you do. A couple of other projects that we have going on that are adventurous. Pavement management has all been awarded. We've run into some delays with the rain there, caught up on other jobs. They are supposed to be starting as soon as tomorrow, but then we have some chance of rain later this week, so we'll see. The 2021 project is 9.9 miles of roadway. This will be the second year that we have $2 million. Just a quick reminder, we were at $750,000 a couple of years ago, 1.35 million, and now it's $2 million. And that was all with existing resources. So this will be the second year. We have a lot of roadwork going on. Millen overlay has been the preferred method of choice, so people really like that. We will do some granite seal on what's called pressure cave. But a lot of millen overlay, Broadway north of where we just did Thornton Street, Ohio Street, some of the downtown streets that will attack this year, about 9.9 miles. You have quite a few development projects going on around the city. I think I've covered them previously, but the Cadence Development is moving along. The first tenant Taco Bell opened. I know that they, they're still trying to secure that fourth spot that they have up there. But now the Montessori School and 7-Eleven are moving along. And then we've had some other interest in that area that, as you know, the vet clinic moved to Seventh Street. Beautiful new building that they have on Seventh Street with much more space. And so that was a huge project. And I think there's been a little bit of interest, maybe in the vet clinic and the restaurant around there. Nothing to report today, but we certainly hope to continue to build that sector. Price Shopper is moving along fine. The city did a big incentive to keep that regional brand here in the city of Leavenworth. And so that project is moving along very well. We just announced a project down on Eisenhower's, 12-acre development. The first tenant is Culvers. And actually, the owner of the Culvers is the one that's going to develop it. He is a local and has some ties to the Leavenworth School Board. And so I think he's moving into the community as well, so we're really excited about that. He's looking to develop the rest of those 12 acres into a commercial development right here on Eisenhower. It certainly helps offer more amenities to our community. One thing I'd like to, if you haven't seen, hopefully you've heard about, is the city commission just recently, I think since the last time I addressed you all, passed Leavenworth 2030, First City Future Forward. This is our 10-year comp plan. The previous comp plan that we did, which covered from 2010 to 2020, was an in-house product and maybe not quite as ambitious. And thorough is the document that we have here. So I really encourage anybody in the community to look through this. We've already started incorporating a lot of what's in here in our city budget. We've allocated some money for trails. We heard there's a lot of amenities and connectivity. We put a splash park in the 2022 budget. More, more community amenities for our families, for our children. So I'd like to thank Dr. Roth, he was part of the steering committee of this and provided a lot of input. We had about 125 residents throughout the city who participated actively in the creation of this plan. And the worst thing you could do obviously with a thing like this is just leave it on the shelf. So we are working to implement as much of this as we can. I sat in the second of two interviews earlier today for a design firm for the reconstruction of Fourth Street through the downtown. And so that's a project that the city is working on with the state to redo Chautauqua through Seneca of downtown. Everything's on the table, streetscaping, new lane configuration, welcome marches, arts, anything that helps first and foremost safety, but then also the ability to feel like you're in a downtown. You know, they talked a lot about placemaking and really feeling that Fourth Street really feels like a corridor, a traffic conveyance method, really then the entryway into your sort of downtown. So really excited about that. Realistic timeline, probably select the design firm in late August. It's probably an eight- to 12-month process because KOD's involved. There's utility relocation and right-of-way and design and community meetings. And so we'll certainly invite members of the board or the district administration to be in those, some of those visioning meetings about what that board will look like. Finally, a couple of things in closing. Like to thank the board for your action out at Henry Leavenworth, doing the dedicated bus lane. I think it's the most sensible solution right now. We'll see, we'll see, we'll see how that changes the dynamic. I know that there's going to be a lot of changes with the children moving to the pre-K K center. And then the bus lane, we'll see what that does. I think we'll continue to watch it. We do have a new public works director and the commission included in their five-year plan or their goal setting to do a five-year pavement management plan, which will look at all the streets in the community and what's the long-term plan for those streets. We don't have any immediate plans to do anything else right now with Byless and Limit. We'll kind of see how this works out and see what kind of problems or remain or are solved. So that's kind of our stance out there. And I also like to thank Dr. Roth and his staff. I think we're going to meet here in the next week or so to talk about Creek Erosion down on Five Mile Creek by the beautiful new sports complex that you created. So I'm really looking forward to work with Dr. Roth and his staff, our new public works director, who's had a chance to review some of the preliminary plans on that and get together. So those are, oh, and finally, I did want to address for those who live in the community. We are having trouble hiring and retaining employees. I think everybody is. I've talked to probably 25 business owners in the last couple of weeks. And the first thing that always comes up is help, is personnel. And it, yes, it can be a matter of pay, but, but there's many positions that we feel are very competitive and we don't get the applicants. So right now, it manifests most visibly in refuse. We just increased the starting pay $2 an hour, it's now over $15 an hour. And we still struggle a little bit to get qualified applicants. And so I think that's across the board, but we are managing the best we can. We've done some contracting, we've tried to do some innovative things. But at the end of the day, a crucial service like trash is about having the people to pick up the refuse that's left out. So we're making do, but we are struggling with that across the board, whether it's police, fire, refuse, streets, wastewater treatment plan, or anything like that. So that's all I have. Open to any questions that you all may have.
Who is your new public works director?
His name is Brian Faust. He was, he's been a public works director in two Kansas cities. And then he most recently was the city engineer for the city of Topeka, where he oversaw a staff of about 24, which is large for the city engineer. And so he started about three months ago.
I mean this with all due respect, but in waiting on to see what happens with the roads around Henry Leavenworth is not what our constituents want to hear. They would like to see us all sitting down to have a conversation together. Because they're really, they, they don't think moving the two classes out is enough. They don't think the bus lane's enough. And they're extremely concerned and do not like the dangerous situations that they feel that have gone on and off. And I would really like to stress that we, the constituents, and I believe a lot of our board members would really like to go ahead and have, where we could do a study session with your commission and us to start at least having some kind of conversation about possibilities. So they too can see that we're actually working and not waiting to see how long we beat at the horse till something happens.
So I think, you know, the only way to answer that is, there's, there's two things. There was the stacking issue, but I think what you're referring to is more of an infrastructure issue. And that's, that, at the end of the day, that's a city issue. And I think it's about managing expectations. The, any work out there would not be within what we have annually for pavement management. That would be more of a reconstruction or an expansion. And there is simply not now nor on the horizon any funds to do that. We did that with Thornton Street, and that was a one-off. We had to wait about six years for enough debt to be retired to do that as a one-off. We'll be paying on that for about 10 years. That was 4.85 million, and for us, that's a good chunk of our annual capital budget. So yes, we could say this is what we would like to have, but realistically, with the budget that we have now, some sort of reconstruction would then also compete with Byless and New Lawrence and just numerous other streets. So that would be a conversation we could have. We probably, you know, happy to have with some of the constituents out there. But there's a lot that goes into a big road expansion project like that.
And I appreciate you saying that because at least now that you've put that forward out there, it's just not in the budget for you right now. But you do want to at least have the conversations and continue them with the constituents. And I think that's something they haven't been able to hear from the, the city right now. So whether it's going to appease the savages per se is a different story, but at least they've gotten to hear that portion, and I do appreciate that.
Yeah, it's extremely complex. So when we grade streets like Thornton, it's not just the condition, it's traffic counts, it's critical city infrastructure below. Thornton Street, about a fourth of that budget was actually underground, it was a stormwater system. There's a lot of localized flooding. So a lot goes into that matrix when we identify, if and when we identify the next large expansion or reconstruction project. But thank you for bringing that up.
No, thank you very much for answering that.
I would ask the question, is there a possibility in the near future, particularly around the time when we get the students back into class and begin, we begin to see what the infrastructure requirement is going to look like, whether it's adequate or it's not adequate, where we could have some public discussion? And not just with us, but maybe with that community? Because I don't, you know, the questions we get clearly indicate they are not aware of many of the things we've already talked about. And that maybe it's time to say, you know, because maybe it's a special assessment. If they're willing to do that, it might be what they need to do. But that, they don't, many of them aren't aware that's the case. They're expecting the city to do something or the school board to do something. And honestly, it's not in our budget, and it's illegal for us to spend money, as you know, in many different ways.
If we can't spend it on stuff that's not on our property.
Exactly. So, so I, I would just offer, you know, as a board member, and maybe some of the others share my sentiments, is that sometime in the September COVID timeframe, it would seem appropriate to have a community forum to get all this out and, you know. You know, I mean, we can agree to things, but you, you know what I'm saying. Sometimes just the truth and the facts laid out there are just as important as what we do.
Right, and you know, maybe the, you know, fact sheet summarizes some of the stuff. Although we have communicated that to just about everybody who's reached out, doesn't always resonate. We used to do benefit districts. That's how projects like this were done for 20 years. And they just have not been palatable since then to do this, something that serves more of a localized, that's not a collector or a material street. Certainly an option, not always a popular one, but certainly an option.
Well, I know, and my little segment of Dakota was asphalted finally in the about 86 timeframe. It was a local assessment for the two blocks that were in there, and we paid cash out of hand. So that, like you said, that's how they did it, but hasn't been done lately. I know I waited for 23 years for Ottawa to get taken care of, and then I moved.
So, Mr. Kramer, in our discussions around the same thing that we're talking about, Mr. Kearney brought up the fact that couldn't we just make it one-way so that there's not two-way traffic? It's to make less danger happen? That would be something that you guys, as the city, would have to do, though. That's not something that we, as a school district, can do to change the direction of the traffic going around the school.
Yeah, absolutely. At this point, my view is you've done all you can do right now. If, if anything else is to be done, it would be the city. Those are, those would be city streets, so city decisions on one-way, city decisions on any projects out there. So beyond the work that the school board has done for the dedicated bus entrance, the next step, if any, would be up to the city to do. And we would do that with police data, speed data, crash data, safety data, but also, as I mentioned, traffic volume, growth patterns, infrastructure. It's a, a matrix, but yes, I, I think the school district's done to this point what they can do.
All right, thank you.
And I want to reiterate that, you know, moving, moving kids around to lessen the number of drop-offs need to happen and putting in a bus lane, they're, they're simply, you know, second or third bite at the elephant. But we absolutely continue to, or we intend to continue going after this particular issue. Because again, reiterating, our constituency has come to us and said, we want something done about the stacking issue and the parking issue, where when Henry Leavenworth has events, they're also parking in neighborhoods south of the school. So those are the things that really need to be focused on. And again, really need to sit down with the city council and, and at least hash out some of these issues. Because our constituents are their constituents. So they should be as interested in fixing those problems as we are.
And I think they have been.
Okay. Back, back to city questions, personally, what's going on with Eisenhower and 20th Streets?
The construction? Projects moving along.
Because, because I haven't seen any moving along since.
Well, so that's a county project. So we have nothing to do with the project other than it's in both the city of Lansing and the city of Leavenworth City Limits. So that's, that's all done by the county. So sometimes there's breaks from weather, sometimes there's breaks for materials. Sometimes there's breaks for, you have one utility hanging out there that hasn't resolved issues, which then stacks up everything else. I don't know specifically, if you haven't seen work in a couple of days or whatever it is, what that specific one would be. But at the end of the day, a contractor like that looks at, when is my deadline? So they may work, and then they may leave for a week. And that's perfectly acceptable a lot of times, as long as they hit that end date of their, their number of contractual working days.
Do we know what that end date is?
We do, I, I wouldn't want to speak, just because I don't have it off the top of my head, but they do have a number of working days with a target, a target finishing.
Okay. Next one, I, I love the LED lights that are going up. I dislike the blue LED lights.
So the purple LED lights are failed lights. That is not a design. So if you see one, there's a, like, the gas inside can actually be bad or fail, and there's a technical term for that. So if you see one, it's not supposed to be wildcat purple.
It's a, it shouldn't be. Somebody's supposed to come along and fix that.
Pioneer blue, right? But that's a malfunctioning light. If you see a light that has a purple or blue haze, that's a malfunctioning light.
There are two of them on Eisenhower.
Okay, let us know, we'll let, those are all by starlight, so we like by starlight and love to change the light.
That's, that's good to know.
Yep.
And, and last, I, I pushed this last time you were here, I'm going to push it again. Tonganakzi Road, between 20th Streets and 10th Streets, be really great if there was some sort of sidewalk where kids could walk on safely and not get hit by 35 mile an hour cars.
And we did rob the sidewalk fund to increase our street budget. That was just one of those, we need to get to 2 million, how do you get there? You take a little from here, a little from here, a little from here. So we took about half the annual sidewalk budget. So mainly, our sidewalk budget right now is cost shares for businesses and residents and some trip hazards and city parks and stuff like that. So it is, it is a diminished program. So something of that scale, like we did out to Shenandoah to, to connect the 20th Street, probably not in the cars right now.
Which was great. Thank you for that.
Yeah, because I know the sidewalks on Shawnee down near Broadway are horrendous.
Yeah, and so we, we, we did increase our sidewalk cost share, we doubled it. So a property owner, residential or business, can get up to $10 a square foot on the sidewalk cost share. They end up being the responsibility of the adjacent property owner, which is a pretty good rebate. So we do have that over.
And if I could backtrack back to Henry, Henry Leavenworth real quick, of a way that could alleviate some of the issue of parents having to drop off their kids, and I know it's not popular, I know it's not in our budget because that's, because it's not in the state budget. But I would encourage all our constituents to write your state reps and tell them you want the state to give you more money for busing so that maybe we can diminish the mileage and reduce the heavy traffic of our parents having to drive their kids, because two and a half miles is too far.
I will, I will comment on that. Because our bus usage isn't, from Shenandoah, which we offer busing, those buses are not full. We did have two buses go into Woodland Village for the same reason. We ended up taking a bus away because there was only one to two passengers on it. So the busing is a buzzword, but it has to be utilized. And when we put that in, it was twofold. One was sidewalks, that has been resolved. The second was the traffic, because the majority of our kids that go to Henry are from the Shenandoah area, and they're just not riding the bus. And so.
And they wouldn't have to pay if they rode the bus.
Those buses, the bus to Shenandoah and the bus to Woodland Village was a cost the board incurred to be able to do that.
So we need to encourage the parents to put their children on the buses instead of dropping their kids off.
Right.
So there's another avenue, constituents.
So it is a twofold.
Right.
I still want to write their legislators to lower that mileage.
Absolutely.
Absolutely positive. But I will say that the buses that we have already scheduled to go out there are not being fully utilized.
Okay.
There are, there, there is room.
So that's something that we, we need to maybe work on or do some kind of campaign to start with the parents about getting them on there.
That bus circles into the Shenandoah area, and it has pockets that it picks up as it did at Woodland Village as well.
So maybe we can do a campaign to get those parents a little bit more active in getting their kids on those buses.
And I've been working with Easton Bus as well to, with the change of the Early Childhood Center, more students will qualify for transportation at that age as well, which will also open up some more seats.
Okay.
And so once all of this gets figured out, we should have more seats at a very minimal cost to our, to our families under the current, current structure. But that's.
So there is already a little bit of other help there that we haven't necessarily discussed.
I do want to encourage them to stay engaged with the, the transportation piece, but they got to utilize the transportation that we do have available.
Very good.
And that will also help the situation at Henry. If we have more people riding the bus, unless parents still might have to drop off at the wait. But the other thing that runs into that is timing. So as a parent, you have to have your kid at the bus stop at a certain time, and that plays into it as well.
Right, okay.
So how do our, how are our families notified that these services are available with the buses from Shenandoah and the buses from Woodland Village?
We did, when we put that in, we sent mass communication out, did backpack stuffs, stuffers, we did the, the family calls, those types of things.
Because we get new families every year.
Right. And don't quote me on this, because I haven't followed up on it, but just kind of sparked the, the deal, the conversation there. But I'm assuming that we still send some stuff at the beginning of the year with enrollment on, on that area, but I can verify that and make sure that that's.
That'd be great.
If not, we'll get that going again.
Do you think maybe we could do some kind of video presentation along with the other videos we've been putting together to promote the schools and everything? That there could be a segment so that these parents can watch and maybe hear it? And it maybe picked up a little bit better for them?
Yeah, I can see how that can blend in.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
When we do the budget, are we going to take a look at forecasts and usage of the buses? I mean, we may need a campaign if we are not even coming close to our targets.
Currently, all of our, I mean, with what, what we have offered is within the budget, including the Shenandoah and the Woodland Village area.
I, I understand. I'm just saying that as a budget process, we should be looking at whether we're spending it wisely on one hand, or maybe we need a different tool to go after and get parents to look harder at putting their kids on the bus. I mean, there's something that, there's some issue there if we are not getting close to our usage. So I was just saying, the budget, and that that's a, would be a good vehicle for us to look at. Our good time is work session to look at it.
Absolutely, because if those families in Shenandoah or Woodland Hills have got Johnny from first grade going over here to Henry Leavenworth, but they got little Jackie that's in pre-K K, they're already getting a bus over there. So where they're talking about where they don't know how they're going to drive their kids from this school, this school, to this school, well, right now, you've already got the busing for two of them.
And any student that's 2.5 miles away from their base school qualifies for free transportation. So any student, and a, a large portion of our students at the Early Childhood Center will fall outside the 2.5 mile range.
I think we're going far astray from what Mr. Kramer's doing.
Interesting, because wait till, wait till the traffic at the new pre-K K center. I mean, you know, I get Henry Leavenworth's an issue, but, you know, we have a lot of neighborhood schools. And there's, there's traffic issues at Anthony, and there's traffic issues at Lord Times. And, you know, pre-K K center is on the commercial board or right by a tick district, so we'll see how that pans out. So.
We do have a separate bus lane already.
We do, you know, we'll see what it does now.
But I would think that if the city wants to have an open house for the constituents out there in that area, we, they could probably make arrangements to use the gymnasium, auditorium, or cafeteria at Henry to have it so that we'd actually be close to the people there. So anything else for, other than just general inspection with busing and funding, which is not Mr. Kramer's job, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to agenda item number three, the consent agenda. 3.1 is a check register, 3.2 amendments to last month's meeting, 3.3 is a treasurer's report, 3.4 consideration of child nutrition and health meal prices, 2021, 2022. 3.5 consideration of quantum health professional special education services. 3.8 consideration of replacement computers for Leavenworth High School.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Wells and a second by Mrs. Price. Any further discussion? Seven zero. Thank you very much. All right, agenda item number five, consideration of Z-Space Riverside Technologies Incorporated proposal.
This was something that we are, Ms. Batson will address, but we have Z-Space in some of our other buildings. And if you recall, she did a demonstration here at the board, but if you have any questions, she's here to answer.
Because it's currently at the intermediate center, and it was being utilized even throughout COVID.
Yes, absolutely. All right, wonderful. Absolutely, Z-Space was used throughout COVID. It was an excellent way to produce labs when you use the teacher station that projects the 3D vision out into the classroom, regardless whether you have the lights on or the glasses on or off. This would be at two of our elementary schools, Brewer and Henry. We eventually want to get it into everyone, and so we kind of have a scaffold stair-step approach.
Is there a reason why we're not doing it at all three at the same time right now?
So I invited representatives, STEM teacher, administration, a classroom teacher from all of our buildings, and had them go through a half-day training with Z-Space. We had secondary schools in the morning, we had elementary in the afternoon. And then followed up with each of them to say, okay, how much do you like or don't like it? What's your agreement that it should be in your school? And what's your commitment level to implementing it right now? Every school gave me different. The agreement and like value was very high from all. The commitment level, not all were high, but there were some discrepancies. Just Anthony's got TWIG they're absorbing at the moment, so they weren't quite ready to add something new, especially after this past year.
And do the other elementary schools use TWIG as well? Or is Anthony the only one that uses TWIG?
Anthony's the only one that uses TWIG, and the others use Mystery Anthony is the only one that uses TWIG. The others use Mystery Science. And then this year we're introducing a virtual lab through Green Bush.
Which the Z-Space will fit in with.
Perfect. Absolutely.
Any further questions, Ms. Batson?
Well, I'm just kind of curious if you, you have one set of kids that have the opportunity to have this, but then you have another set of kids that are using something completely different. It just doesn't seem balanced across the board.
Sure.
And I'm a bit concerned about that because then I could hear a parent going, well, Suzie didn't get to do that. And, but such and such did. And it's, I, it just seems a little.
That's one of the reasons for working with Henry and Brewer is the first rollout in elementary because Anthony did get TWIG. It was adopted last year, so they've had a full year with it. And one of the good things is they all go into, and all students have equal access, but different resources. So we're still teaching the NGSS standards. There's technology in every school. There's materials and equipment in every schools for science. It's just different for resources all.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Absolutely.
I'd like, sorry.
No, I was going to say I need a motion.
I was going to make a motion to approve the purchase of Z-Space and the amount of $68,602 from Riverside Technologies.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mrs. Wells and a second by Mr. Goodman. Thank you, Mrs. Price. And any further discussion? All those in favor? Seven to zero. The part I've been looking forward to. Agenda item number six, reorganization of Board of Education election officer, 6.1.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for a nomination for president and nominate Mr. Powell.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second for Mr. Powell?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for nomination.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Powell.
I'd like to nominate Judy Price.
We have a motion for Mrs. Price. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. All right. This is interesting. But what else about, about this year has gone normal? So that's okay. All right. So we will go ahead with the vote on. Before we go ahead with the vote, I'll say one thing. I am lucky to serve on a board with six other people who are fully qualified, probably better than I am to be president. And I know I can't voice that off on Mr. Kearney because he's already done it. So that brings it down to five people eligible, of which two people have been nominated. Excuse me, I should say it was nominations closed?
Well, if I may, sir, since Mr. Powell has made a counter nomination, I would like, that tells me he would prefer someone else doing the job. So I would like to remove my nomination of Mr. Powell.
All right. Mr. Goodman, would you care?
I, I will second that motion.
I appreciate the nomination. I have legal Robert.
I studied Roberts Rules of Order. It is legal.
As long as Roberts is here.
I'm just bringing.
All right. So now we have one motion. Since the first motion has been withdrawn, all those in favor of Mrs. Price, raise your hand. And we have seven to zero. Madam President, the mighty gavel is yours.
And thank you to my fellow board members for your vote of confidence. Oh, I should place it too. That's right.
Judy, you have more hair. Oh.
Sorry, Brenda.
And we got a thorn between the roses.
Who are you calling a thorn?
What are you saying here?
This direction is a point.
I am a cheer baby, you know.
Oh, my. Okay. All right. So that, now that we're gotten past item 6.2, we'll go to item 6.3, the election of the Vice President of the Board of Education. At this time, do we have any nominations? Mr. Powell, would you like to be Vice President?
I would serve as Vice President, yes.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Powell. That would have been up to the president to recognize your arm.
Well, then you interrupted my arm. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I second the motion. Move things along. Do you have any, did you have anything else, Mike?
Do you have any other nominations?
Does that nomination from Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
And you're second.
Yes.
So nomination by Mrs. Murphy and a second by Mr. Goodman for Mr. Powell to be Vice President. Are there any other nominations? Okay. This time, I suppose we sell good. All of those in favor? Seven to zero. Okay. Mr. Powell, you are now the Vice President of the Board.
We're the second.
And we're canceling until.
I'll keep my junk out of your way later.
Absolutely.
It's the dance of the class.
Brenda, to confirm, I need to read all of these, correct? Yes. Okay. All right. So item seven to zero, reorganization of the Board of Education for appointments and designations. 7.1 is appointments and designations. The following are recommendations. For 7.2, the board clerk is Beth Maddox. For 7.3, for assistant clerk is Brenda Shoemaker. 7.4 for treasurer is Christine Court. 7.5 for truancy is principals and assistant principals. 7.6, the hearing officer for free and reduced meals is Beth Maddox. 7.7, child nutrition, excuse me, child nutrition representative is Cynthia Schrader. 7.8, the capers representatives are Beth Maddox, Christine Court, Darlene Klaus, and Stephanie Hooper. 7.9, the federal and state grant representatives, Amy Sloan. 7.10, section 504 representative is Mike Growth. 7.11, freedom of information officer is Jake Potter. 7.12 is the name of depository for district funds to include Bank Midwest, Commerce Bank, Exchange National Bank, Mutual Savings Association, the Country Club Bank, Citizens Federal Savings, Armed Forces Bank, Citizens National Bank, and the State of Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. 7.13 is the selection of the official district newspaper, the 11 North Times. 7.14 is the impact paid representatives for, excuse me, Beth Maddox and Darlene Klaus. 7.15 is coordinator of homeless children duties, Amy Sloan. 7.16, our attorney is Paul Sinelli Law Office and the Kansas Association of School Boards. 7.17 is transportation supervisor is Beth Maddox. 7.18 for health, dental, and vision insurance broker is Hayes Company. 7.19 for property liability errors and admissions insurance broker is Riley and Sons. And 7.20, a motion to approve all appointments and designations as recommended.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all recommendations from 7.1 to 7.20.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Mrs. Murphy and a second by Mr. Powell. All of those in favor? Seven to zero. Okay, thank you. Well, next item is item number eight, reorganization of the Board of Education for organizational procedures. So 8.1, the organization procedures, followed by the following resolution. And you see, 8.2 is resolution 21 dash, excuse me, 21 slash 22 dash 001, generally accepted accounting principles. 8.3, resolution 21 slash 22 dash 002 to rescind previous policy and adopt the Board of Education manual for the 2021, 2022 year. 8.4, resolution 21 slash 22 dash 003 and 21 slash 22 dash 004, approval of petty cash funds. 8.5, resolution 21 slash 22 dash 005 to approve the Board of Education meeting dates and times for 2021 dash 2022. 8.6, or resolutions 21 slash 22 dash 006 through 21 slash 22 dash 013, approval to maintain activity funds. 8.7, resolution 21 slash 22 dash 014 to establish home rule. 8.8, approval of early payment of claims. 8.9, authorization of certificates for manual signature. 8.10, approval to publish notifications. 8.11, a motion to approve all organizational procedures. Do you have your motion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I think you want to answer this before, but why is it, why is it generally acceptable? Why can't it just be accepted accounting principles? Is there a reason for that? Are there other, are there other accounting methods that might be better?
So we're under a cash basis law.
Yeah.
And that.
That's the only one that's accepted.
Well, for us, because we go off beyond, like, we have to have the cash on hand to do it. And so it's different than in others. And so that whole, and that's why every audit, they note that you're in violation because we're under the Kansas cash. And so that's why.
We don't depreciate, etc., which is some of the things that.
I get that.
And if I could just mention something for Brenda, the resolutions are back there in the corner for us to sign when the meeting's over.
I'd like to make a.
Don't leave.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all organizational procedures from 8.1 to 8.11.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion from Mrs. Murphy and a second by Mr. Goodman. All of those in favor? Mike, are you voting or abstaining?
I'm a little tired.
Okay. So, all right, we're seven to zero. Thank you. All right. Item nine, consideration of revenue neutral tax rate.
So as Beth comes up, one of the things that, from a board standpoint, this is new this year. I'm going to pass out a packet. The top page is exactly what Beth will be talking about and need approval for. The backup document is something that is created to help the board understand why the tax neutral rate and what that looks like as a whole for that. So tonight, as Beth goes through this, the thing that you're approving is the ability to do this. You're not approving a budget. You're not approving an expenditure. You're not approving any of that. So this is due to all school districts across the state. And I want to emphasize the rules, the rule or the mandate automatically causes us to be not cost neutral because your general fund is set at 20 mils. We can't go to 19 mils. We can't go to 21 mils. It's state vol that 20 mils is automatically there. Your cap that your LOB is just 33%. Sometimes you're at 33%. Sometimes you haven't been at the state max. And your capital outlay by board resolution is eight mils. Doesn't mean you have to go to eight mils. So when she presents this to you, keep all that in mind. And then as you look through the backup documents, feel free to ask Beth questions or myself questions. We'll try to do the best we can to do that. But Beth has worked, she's, she's awesome. She's been with the county clerk, and I don't want to steal the thunder anymore. But I just kind of wanted to set the framework for you as you're looking through. And so, Ms. Beth.
Okay.
Sorry if I misspoke to you.
No, so far so good. So as Dr. Rose said, this is new for the budget for school districts to receive a revenue neutral tax rate from the county clerk for each of the funds, the general fund, supplemental general fund, capital outlay fund, and the bond and interest fund. The revenue neutral tax rate is the mill levy needed to raise the same tax dollars for the 21, 22 budget equal to the tax dollars received for the 20, 21 budget. So we've calculated estimated mill levy for the 21, 22 budget, and the estimated mill levy exceeds the county's revenue neutral tax rate for the school district. So in order to go to the next step in the budget process, the board has to approve the notice that goes to the county clerk that says our mill levy exceeds the revenue neutral rate. The total revenue neutral rate, tax rate is 53.885 mils. The total estimated mill levy for the 21, 22 budget is 58.191 mils. So as Dr. Rose said, the difference is in all the funds, but because the general fund statute says it has to be 20 mils, we cannot go to the revenue neutral rates, which the county shows, shows as 18.79 mils. But we can't go to that. We have to levy the 20 mils. We have to provide the county the notice and set the mill levy ceiling for the 21, 22 budget. This is the ceiling. So when we come back in August to approve the budget for publication, I anticipate the mill levy to be lower than the estimated 58.19 mils and remain relatively flat with the 20, 21 budget. That makes sense.
So just to reemphasize, this is the ceiling proposal. If we don't, if the board does not approve this, then we can't go to the ceiling. And if there's anything in the budget that, at the end, when it comes to the budget hearing and the prep of all the budget documents, if something comes in wrong, we can't go to that. So you're approving the ceiling, but understand where we're at is probably the floor of what the mill rate was or very close to the mill rate of what it was currently. So anytime anybody's property values increase or businesses come into the community or things like that, it automatically, and that's what a community wants, a community wants their evaluation to go, go up because that means you have a vibrant community. About 90%. But in the same respect, so does your, so does your return on the end, on the end. So anyway, this is not, you're not approving the budget. You're approving the ability to go forward with the budget.
Can remember back in the eighties, mill levy rate was about 88 mils, if I remember right.
And six or seven years ago, your, your mill rate was in the mid 60s, mid 60s in Leavenworth.
Yeah. It's gone down. And we continue to retire, retire some of our bond debts. That continues to push it down, correct?
Right.
Or refinance some or reduce the interest rates, which also saves us considerably.
Thank you, Mel.
Our, actually, as we get into the budget in August, the debt service payments are actually going up for 21, 22.
But one of the things with that, one of the things that Beth can control and something that you've done as a board, your cash carryover in your, in your bond and interest allows her to keep that as flat. And even though our payment's going up, one of the things that she's able to do through good finance, through Mr. Gola when he was here, now Ms. Maddox, is the ability to be able to adjust that. So we're not riding the roller coaster. As Ms. Murphy pointed out, we're trying to keep a tax base as close to neutral as possible. But understand, as evaluations goes up, which we cannot control.
Right.
And a 20 mil levy, we cannot control. What we can control, they've done a nice job over the last eight years since I've been here, being able to do that for you as a board and us as a community as a whole. Because we're, all are taxpayers. And so that is something to keep in mind as we go. And I've had a conversation with Mr. Powell on an individual basis, is that's not what we want to do is ride that roller coaster where we give everything back and then the next year we have to pull everything back. And so that's why we've always tried to keep a flat mill rate, even though knowing the mill rate, if the valuation goes up, it does increase taxes slightly, yes, from a school standpoint. And that's all you can control as a board are the taxes from a school district.
I guess the question comes, when I look at this, we're saying that the actual tax levy for 2021 was 6, 6.3 million, basically, right? I'm reading this.
The tax, actual tax dollars collected.
6.3.
Yes.
Locally.
And the estimated taxes, though, because of the mill rate levy and the assessment changes, is going to be 6.7 million. So we're, we're about $500,000, $400,000. So I guess my question would be, as a agency for the community, what do we have a demand for $400,000? And I understand the issue of trying not to make a sine wave every year of changing. But we're going to go through this probably because of the way that's laid out. We're going to go through this process every year, whether we like it or not. I guess that would be my question. As we go into the budget process, you know, why, why do we have 400? Just because of the assessment, now we get $400,000 extra dollars. The question is, okay, why? Why not take the mill levy, at least in the LOB, to account for that?
Well, your actual, your actual will come in different than what this proposal was. And so as you get into the. And so as you get into the budget, and you can see the actuals, because you could go in a budget and look back three years and see what each category goes up incrementally, most of that, you're looking at utilities, you're looking at salaries, and that type of deal as your driving factor in your, in your increases within a budget. So tonight is, you're just looking at a ceiling. So that number is going to be higher than what it is. When you say 400,000, it probably won't end up 400,000.
Well, we know we're going to have a utility issue.
Right.
I know there's a couple of things. That's, that's my only challenge here, is that when we start talking about neutral, it's not just theoretical, it's taxes out of somebody's pocket.
Remember earlier, we were talking about wanting more busing.
Right.
Busing ain't cheap.
And so we just need, that's my point, is I just hope that we have our arguments, that we know how this is going to be used to benefit the community.
Beth will have it in more detail in the meeting.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, that's me.
So just so you're aware, this notice as you have is not published in the paper. It's just going to go to the county clerk. When we come back in August, that's when it will be published. And it will match what is, what shows in the budgets, which two numbers will match.
So to review the bidding, all we're asking for in this particular thing is to set the ceiling for the budget operations and that the actual budget will come in and tell us this is our actual rate.
Correct.
And provides a notice to the county.
Basically, it's a formality. And then once the budget is.
So you need, you need a motion, something you can put this forward to the clerk.
Then the actuals actually come in, and most generally, they're even lower than what is approved at that point in time.
So what happens if we put against this?
Your budget.
That's.
We're in violation of state law.
Right, yeah. If we don't make notice to the county, then yeah, we don't, we cannot go forward with the budget.
Okay.
Ms. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the revenue neutral tax rate letters and, or information as we received it for notification to the county clerk's office.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Powell and a second by Ms. Murphy to forward the neutral tax rate notification to the county clerk. All of those are here. 7-0. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. All right, so number 10.
We heard that one.
Superintendent Snell's report.
We do.
Dr. Rose.
So did everyone receive the, or receive the flyer, see the flyer for the open house on the first post? So we're very excited about that. We do have, I did invite Commissioner Watson, and he's agreed to come and see our facilities and be a part of that, as well as our state board of representatives. She, Janet Wall, will also be here on that day as well. So if you do see them, please introduce yourself and have a conversation with them, because it's important that they're in our community and they see what we're trying to do as a district with that. So going from that into construction, they ran into a little bit of a delay on our turf due to weather. Certain substructure had to be in, and they needed X amount of dry days to do that. They brought in extra crews over the weekend and reported today as they caught up with that. So everything is scheduled to be in tip-top shape on the 21st. So we're excited. What that day will look like is a day of awesome, where the actual ribbon setting will be. But our building at the intermediate school, along with the new entryway to the high school, will also be manned, so people can walk and see that as well. As the baseball and softball field complex, we're still waiting on, they're waiting on the red infield. There's evidently a shortage of that. We can't finish the softball field with the, with the sod until they get that, so they're not driving over with buckets or loaders to, to put that out. And so once that gets done, we'll finish sod, there'll be fencing added, and then that complex will be complete. The concession stand has been completed. I do want to set some time up with the board that you get to go out and see that, because that's a pretty neat addition to that middle school and high school complex there. So I will set some time up before school starts, where we go, and I'll work with Ms. Price on that, to set some time to get up to the board on that.
Hey, Mike, I went out there today and, and all that stuff is still sitting there? Is that ours?
The equipment out.
Well, there's a whole lot of fencing, I don't think we need that.
So all of that's, they haven't turned anything over to us yet. None of that equipment out there, unless you've seen a mower or something like that.
No, no, I'm talking about the fencing. There are brand-new rolls that black fencing.
Yeah, well, it's not complete all the way around. There's gates, and there's still some stuff in the, in the batting, or the, the, the map, the bulkheads. So that's still all theirs, it's not ours yet. If there's anything left over, which they'll need.
Yeah, my question is going to be, if there is something.
Right, yes. The sign for Mr. Carney's Field is up. It looks super sharp.
Has he autographed it yet?
Not yet.
I climbed it today.
So that, that is up. And again, that looks very nice, and it was a nice touch by our board to do that. The Five Mile Creek Study, as it was alluded to earlier, we are set up to, I believe, visit next Monday or Tuesday, next Monday, the 19th. And Matt and I will visit with the Mr. Kramer and their engineer. We will then bring an idea back to the board for you to consider around the hot point of that, which they'll also bring in a presentation, and I'll work with Ms. Price on that, to get that set up, whether that be a work session with this board or part of the August board meeting. Our timeline on that, that we feel would be sometime October, November, to actually have a package presented to the board to fix that piece right by the track that was identified in the pictures that you saw a couple of months ago on that. And so that piece is still, more information to come.
Mike, before you move off of that, we've had some flash flood type conditions within the last month on this side of town, on this side. Is that still, or is, I guess, I guess the question is, what's the condition? Because it was getting pretty bad when we got the picture a couple of months.
Right. So I asked Matt and Dave this morning at our weekly meeting on, give me a timeframe to your best guess of where that takes away that trail. They felt like if we don't do something between, in basically 365 days, that they'll have to close that trail just south of our football field there, where it's impending on that, infringing on that, on that area right there. And so the thing with the study, and again, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but in, in the study, they've identified five areas of most need. That's technically an area that's like one or two on that list, but there's not an order that we have to do it that would interfere with anything else in the entire plan. That was something that was identified by Matt and Dave long before we even did the study of an area that we thought we could take some spoils and actually fix it. And so we'll bring that, and we'll give you, share your information from the meeting that I have next Monday with them, that kind of sets some timelines with the board.
That's good. I just was wondering if you'd immediately say.
Right. So they, they literally said this morning that they feel like 365 days or one year from today, that they would probably have to close that trail. So that was a question I had for them as well, because of, and of the rains and the water that was going through there. Many of you had questions on the lease agreement that I shared with you that we're working on with KC, Kansas City, Kansas Community College for, for that. My thought and idea on that was to give you the lease agreement, and again, I'll work with Ms. Price to make sure she's agreeable to this. But when we do the work session for the budget, I feel like that would be a good time to maybe tag that on as a separate, or we can talk about it in August. And so what that lease agreement does is basically take everything that we're doing now, and we put a timeframe to them, that they take it over at the conclusion of that. The first lease agreement that we put forth was five years. They requested, you see in the track changes, that they wanted to reduce that to three years. However, once they signed the lease, all, all of the exterior things, like we currently take care of all the shovel or the snow removal, the air, the mowing and the roof and the air conditioning and all those types of things, they would be responsible for that from the time that the lease is signed forever. So that does eliminate some pretty good liability from the district for us. There was a question, maybe Mr. Powell asked me, does that include the continuation of our kids getting to go free? Yes, it does, for the Senate Bill 155. As long as Senate Bill 155 is intact, our students taking those vocational courses continue to go in the same manner that they, they're going today. The lab costs and those types of things are for our classes that are of like biology or whatever they, they need. Most of the tools, kids don't have to have. Most of the food products, they may have to buy, like their uniform or whatever.
The scrubs.
The scrubs, that type of deal.
Chef code.
They would keep those. Anything that they can leave at the facility, the school would be responsible for as far as a college. So there haven't, there wasn't really a lot of change in that, and we can really dive into that at a later time. But those are the big pieces to that. And the last thing I'll leave you with, when we're looking at that, because I know as board members, one of the things that you've probably heard lots, well, they're getting it for free. They've never had it for free. They paid all the utilities, which we were paying at the time. Granted, they weren't as high because it was non-use, but you had to keep the utilities up or the building would deteriorate, so we already had that. They've been fixing things. They pay for all the staff, we don't pay for the staff. If we were to run that program the way it currently is, just on the vocational side, you're looking anywhere between seven teachers and nine teachers throughout the process. And if you just take $50,000, which is on the low end, that's $450,000 a year that they paid for that, plus the utilities, plus the maintenance and those types of things. And so by the time this is all said and done, they probably, right now, have got over $5 million invested in that building. As a board or as a community, I don't believe you could sell that for $5 million. So everything that you get from this point forward is honestly, for an old Western Kansas term, it's gravy on the taters. Right? And so anyway, I just wanted to touch that, and we can dive into that more as we get there.
Not to mention, we avoid all the capital outlay for stuff, and that building is starting to need some capital outlets.
Right.
Mike, I want to dive into one thing, though. I was out there today, and so are we abandoning those ball fields the kids practice on?
So once they would take over the entire thing, they would be there, the ball teams would work with them. But Matt and Dave have agreed to take care of like the ball field area if the, if the county would, if the.
KCK.
KCK would want us to, until they would look at expanding or do anything that they would use that area. Now, they could say no to us due to whatever else. That would be their choice. They haven't been. With other things, when we first started the lease agreement, we used the GM, we did some things. So I see them being pretty workable, but that would be their responsibility with Matt and talking with Matt and Dave.
It looked like that they took away one of the backs out from that.
They would, I don't know that. And then the last thing I have, Madam President, is that summer school, I want, I mean, this isn't anything we're trying to hide, we have dealt with some COVID issues at the intermediate school, we dealt with some COVID issues at our elementary school, and we're now, today we're identified with some COVID issues in our Horizon kids. So I make this point to you, one, we cannot ask who's been vaccinated and who's not. So for somebody to say, well, if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask, if you're not vaccinated, you should wear a mask, we have no way of proof of that. And if I see somebody without a mask, I can't go up to them and say, show me your, show me your vaccination card at current law, right? So we've handled things differently at the older kids' level than we did at the early child of it, and, or the elementary and what our recommendation is for Horizon kids, even though that's a foundation program, not necessarily a school program. To my knowledge, we've had, we, we took very minimal phone calls. Our attendance rate, because we offered the attendance that you can not send your child, and it's a short window of collection, I want you to know, is anywhere between 5% and 7% lower than what it was when, before the identification was there. I say that to the board, and I say this publicly, because I truly believe these are the same scenarios that we're going to be seeing in August. And as we start preparing as a cabinet, moving forward, and the recommendations to the board, all of this information is being gathered, we're trying to analyze it, we're trying to look at what our pockets are from attendance from staff, what our attendance are for students, put that together to make a recommendation to the board on how we proceed once identification of positive cases are confirmed. And so COVID's not going to go away, and how we deal with that and the expectation will really be dependent upon, in my opinion, the level of the community of what they want. And right now, as I see it, we're probably about a 60%, 40% from a computed, community standpoint, just on the small communications that we've had, that 60% are like, stay in, stay in, stay in, and 40% are like, whoa, you know, those types of things. And that's never going to go away. And I just want you to know that we're taking all this into consideration, but it's not anything we're shying away from. I talked to, on a meeting last week, I asked 65 other administrators across the state that was on Zoom with me, no one identified any other COVID cases. I said, well, I guess it's good to be a pioneer, because I'm going to share what we've done and what we've dealt with up to this point. And that sparked a lot of conversation in that group of 65 other superintendents across the state. So there's a lot of information coming on, there's a lot of, probably still a lot of uncertainties on how things are going to play out, but it's not anything that we put in the closet and close the door and not thinking about it. And I just wanted to reassure the board, reassure the community, that we are still very aware of what's out there and trying to devise a best plan to protect not only our students, which is our most valuable asset, but our, our staff, which we have to have staff to take care of our most valuable asset.
I have a little, and you probably don't know the answer, or maybe you do. These persons who tested positive, do you know if they just took the one test, whichever test it was, and did not have a secondary test? And I ask because there've been several people that have taken a test in the last week, and then the health department called them and said, no. This test actually reads that you could have been in contact or had recovered from COVID to take another test and actually been negative.
That I don't have an answer to, Ms. Murphy. I do know, out of one of our positives, and they just gave it to us voluntarily, that they were not vaccinated. I don't know on the others or not, but.
But it's not about whether they had the vaccine or not, it's just, you know, there was.
Right. And I don't know.
A hospital check, but it was one of the speed rapid ones, when they went and actually got a full test, it came back negative.
Yeah, I don't know that.
Like, no, you don't have it. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Rose, how are we notifying the community about the open house?
We've put it out Facebook-wide, Twitter, I don't know if it's on Instagram or not. It's also been put forth to the foundation. And Jake had a meeting with Brandon Johannes, the director of our Chamber of Commerce, and so that, and we'll continue to advertise it in those ways.
Could we get, possibly get the newspaper to take Jake's idea?
Yeah.
Because I think it'd be nice to give them.
That's my way of talking like me, we'll get it.
But it just seems like it'd be nice to give it a little bit of a concept as well. It's not just a new building, not, you know, but there's a whole concept that your team has pulled together to teach differently. And it'd be a good opportunity to start, you know, associating that, socializing.
That's why I'm excited that Dr. Watson and Ms. Wall will be here to see that.
Yeah.
And I did forward the flyer to the Leavenworth County Historical Society Director to put through the membership and the board, seeing since those prints are on the walls.
through the membership and the board, seeing since those prints are on the walls. So I know they'll be excited to see like everything in place.
Okay, all right. So next item is the executive sessions for negotiations. Ten minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss negotiations pursuant to the exception under employer-employee negotiations under the Kansas Open Meetings Act and that we return to open session in this room at 7:20.
Second.
So we would like to invite Dr. Roth, Amy Sloan, and Robert Hingel with us.
All right. Motion on the table?
Beth.
Shall we take a break on the next one?
Yes.
Then I agree.
All those in favor? All right, seven oh.
Mr. Powell.
I won't stop too soon.
Congratulations, you returned.
The coup was successful. Or abdication, or whatever the right term.
All right, our next item is number 12 for the executive session for non-elected personnel.
Madam President, I'm likely going to executive session to discuss non-elected personnel pursuant to the exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed and that we return to an open session in this room at 7:31.
One.
One.
One second.
The board will invite Dr. Roth, Amy Sloan, Beth again, or not Beth?
No.
No Beth and Robert Hingel.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. Wells and a second by Mr. Powell. All of those in favor? Seven zero.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the staffing report as presented to us.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the staffing report by Ms. Murphy and a second by Mr. Goodman. All of those in favor? Seven zero. Okay. Item 14 is Leavenworth City Commission and 14.2 is Leavenworth County Commission. I know our notes are there. And then closing, 15-1, upcoming meeting dates.
Probably a couple that are just, if you don't want to. The 21st being the open house, then all staff, the administration reports back to 26. Enrollment is the 28th, that is onsite. We do have open enrollment going on currently online. The New Teacher Academy is August 2nd through the 5th. I will work again with Ms. Price before then to see the involvement of the board, but please feel free to come on the 2nd. We'll get an agenda out to you to greet and meet new staff members. And there's also, we're also doing, the foundation is hosting the social, we'll get information to you on that as well. Then the next board meeting is the 9th and we're working on the schedule for convocation and all teachers reporting back. Things are going to start happening pretty quickly now. July is almost half over and we'll have staff returning fairly quick and we'll get a lot of things happening. And so you'll get a lot of correspondence probably over the next three weeks via updates and that through email and that kind of communication. So be prepared.
Where is the New Teacher Academy taking place at?
Right now, I believe we're using the high school, right? So it'll be at the high school.
Do we have any unscheduled teaching input?
No.
No, we're good. Have to ask. All right, so board member comments. We'll start with Mr. Carney.
I have a comment. The last meeting, we had people come in and speak. I just don't think it's a good idea, in my opinion, going on past references to some of the other issues that we had over the years, people coming and speaking. I don't think if the board comments, we should be addressing what we talked about with the patrons talked about. I don't think that's a good idea.
Okay, settle. Ms. Wells?
I am looking forward to this upcoming school year. It's going to be challenging and exciting and hopefully it starts off with a great rolling thunder. I'm super excited for Lawson, so I've already turned in my paperwork to volunteer and I'm excited to volunteer any chance I get.
That's it? All right, Mr. Goodman?
I want to add to that sentiment. Looking forward to this year. It'll be interesting. It's back to school and more ways than one. So I just thank the administration for what they do, even in the summertime, they're still working. So it's great to have that and looking forward to next year.
Ms. Murphy?
I want to say I've been really excited to see everything that's been happening during the summer. We've got our summer sport practices, we've had summer school. I've seen some of the things interns have done, put on Instagram and Twitter and things like that. It's really exciting to see those students work and hear their excited voices. I'm just excited to keep watching everything transpire and grow because it's really amazing and it's an amazing district.
Mr. Garland?
I'll do it all.
He's been with nine-year-olds.
Been with a bunch of nine-year-olds, putting potentially lethal objects in their hands.
With training, but.
With training, yes.
Yeah, I just, I want to thank all of the staff and the educators that have participated in the summer school. You know, COVID didn't go away just because we got to the end of the year. And so I think that we did a couple of things with that. One of them was we proved a principle, what's August going to look like? And I thought that was very important and I appreciate the maturity that our administration and our building staffs have handled these challenges, which wasn't, you know, throw up our hands and run away. It was what do we need to do to continue to educate these kids? Because if summer school was ever more important, it was at the end of this education cycle we've had. So thanks to all of you. And I mean that from the depth of my heart because we're still not caught up, as you and I, as the superintendent and I have talked about, we're not going to catch up for a while. And so we're going to have to look through this year for opportunities to measure where we are, you know, really see where our kids are and then figure out ways to help push them back into where they should have been if we hadn't had the pandemic. And I know you guys are up to it, so I appreciate what happened with the summer school. So thanks to all of you. And I just would, you know, remind the public that maybe listen, you know, it's still COVID and that it's the measures that we took to get where we are, where we can live with each other again and go publicly to places. And we're just going to have to carry that forward into the next year. And so as a board member, you know, I support whatever common sense approaches we take, but I want to keep our kids in school. And so much like as Wells mentioned earlier, I'm submitting my paperwork. I'm ready to go to work at Lawson tomorrow.
Awesome, thank you. I'll give us some last. So I once again say thank you to all my fellow board members for putting in their trust and confidence in me to do this and thank you, Mr. Garland, for leading us for the past year. Thank you. July is a month of reorganization as we get ready for going back to school next month, but I know a lot of our students and teachers have already been in school all summer. I still believe in what they do and I believe in their efforts in trying to get caught up with, you know, all of the fun that they had, didn't miss in having COVID. Other than that, it's a great day to be a pioneer and we are adjourning at 7:38.
Don't forget to sign the resolutions.
Oh, yes. Sign everything in the back corner.